Now, Section 12. And I would argue that Section 12 is the most serious of all offenses. What is Section 12? Number one is unauthorized installation of any traffic control sign or item. Then number two is interference with any traffic control sign or item. Number one, unauthorized installation. Nagbuhat buhat mo kaugalingan 'yung sign and signal, o 'yung 'yung i-display sa dalan para makita sa uban. That's actually what? That's actually telling yourself na, "Okay, mora pariyara may ka-levelan eh sa LGU, magtukot pod kokaugalingan na kung sign." That's taking the power and that's, 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 well, that's abrogation of power. And then second, interference. 'Yung kikuba ang sign nagitukod sa LGU or sa DPWH. That's a serious offense because you're actually damaging taxpayers' property. So that's why the penalty for this offense is, well, first offense palang dayon, sir now, sir gumay. Five thousand pesos. Second offense, thirty days imprisonment, no more fine. Then third offense, six months imprisonment. The maximum that we can impose under the law. So implementation, um, we will issue citation tickets. So if you have violated any of the punishable acts under Article 4, you shall be given a citation ticket by our implementing agency, the CTMS. Now, makita na'to sa citation ticket. What is the nature of the offense, the date, the time? And then angalan sa apprehending officer. This is for transparency purposes. See, a apprehending officer magtago o triplicate copy ano eh, kaya ang isa ano eh iattack sa CTO, ang isa ano eh iattack sa mayor's office. Now, what will you do if ma-tagahan kay citation ticket? You are given a maximum of seventy-two hours from your date of receipt to settle whatever penalty or fine that you may have. So if your penalty imposed, if the penalty imposed citation ticket is a fine, you are expected to go to the city treasurers' office to settle. If the penalty is imprisonment, the city legal office na siya muake. Sige, nahog dayan.
Adone, can you clarify? In case of failure to pay the fine, uh, CTO o CTMS mato sa LTO for the filing of appropriate charge? Kung sa'ng charge, ipalya sa LTO?
Uh, yes, sir, pero, we will, ano, um, regarding the tagging of the vehicle for alarm, ma'am, if I may be clarified, this requires an order from the court? Or can the LGU directly call for the tagging of a specific vehicle?
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. So for us to, to record the violations committed by the drivers with issued, issued with a citation ticket, for us to record it, there should be a mowa between LGU and LTO.
Thank you po, ma'am. So, Mr. Chair, as, as mentioned by the honorable...
So, nedog, nedog muake. Podika bayad ang violator at LTO?
We can forward the all information to the LTO, but the condition si ni Kwanon is imoa, Mr. Chair. A mowa between the LTO and the LGU.
May mo pagmua?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Bumay, bigo orders, may mo to'gag mua?
Yes, okay.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, another question that was brought up in the POC discussion. Um, if LTO imposes their own penalties and this ordinance imposes this, their own penalties, what happens? Isa lang ba ang bayaran? The answer is no. LTO will collect under the law. The LGU will also collect under their ordinance. So, dawol ang imuhang, ano, dawol ang igo sa imoa. That's, that, if that's not a deterrent, di ba, I don't know what is. And then Section 16. Um, at the end of every month, the CTMS shall fairness to the city mayor all data related to citation tickets issued, and then separability clause, repealing clause, and then effectiveness clause. Effectivity clause, um, we'll have to edit that out because June naman ta'karin. So, I think that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So, una violation, kung ang LTO mo-charge, may posaro penalty, lahi na. Because the penalty imposed by LTO is based on national law. Kiling sa ato, local LGO, may poso penalty do'pinan. Is based on ordinance, do'pinan pa dawol eh. La-hi na, this is a penalty. If LTO impose penalty based on national law, the judge impose penalty based on local ordinance. So, so, kula'to, si Tino, yung pos, on this. Uh, ma'am, Salome, na partis, if a party impose, say, conference, and you mention the muaan, two, three, and you want it, oh, can you receive?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as regards to the penalty, uh, in LTO, based on Joint Administrative Order 2014-01, we only collect penalty for this regarding traffic sign and any other violations pertaining to traffic lights, only one thousand pesos. So, I guess, uh, na-correct it on five thousand para sa LGU. Because I think there's, um, provision in the local government code, I'm not very sure, let me ask the LG, uh, that the LG can collect beyond what the national is collecting.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Moro, adore ba'wad na, agay pi'of na'to sa kono, na maya na, may jo, but this time, itako ang violation sa pos rinas pa-bos ba? Si Kumi ba'ng ito, or nasan ba? So, if it is a penalty sa violation, then there's a set of, there's a provision sa LGO. So, it is on the battle. Itako ang penalty sa LGO, so, ay palawak na, the local ordinance, it was plenty higher, but the penalty imposed by the national law. So, we think, we consider that, ma'am, we consider, lahi na, violation. So, any other, uh, impose bang, uh, uh, the visitor, certain thing that he has? Do you have a process?
Hello, hello. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. I am Mr. Persing Tangketo Jr., representing Osamis Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I'm here to talk about our position paper. In line with ma'am Salome said that the LTO is only charging of one thousand pesos, while our LGU is proposing a five thousand, uh, penalty of five thousand pesos fines just for the first offense. That's why we came up with, uh, our position, position paper. We have submitted this, uh, on, we submitted this on May 30, 2025, and was duly accepted, received by the Office of the City Council. Muna, ang among, uh, from among your proposed ordinance penalties, ang amog 'yung gihangyo, kay kami, kami, Osami City Chamber of Commerce, I think as well as the Osamis Filipino Chinese Chamber of Commerce, naglantao may delay lang sa among kabahin. Uh, actually, kung kami pwem masilutan, that is very big, five thousand. We are also thinking of these smaller businesses, as well as the atong mga common nga tao, motor cab, ano, kung masilutan sila, or any one of us, masilutan of five thousand pesos na, one thousand na mangali ang first offense LTO. So, sakit kayo. And besides, ang, uh, kanang imprisonment, di ba, allergy makaitan ay imprisonment. Allergy kayo, takay, kung may imprisonment ta'kin, kesa, masi-kesa sa ato, diyan, ako ka-imprison, na sa'on ako pagtrabaho. About the motor cab drivers, may imprisonment sila, asa masila, mangitag panginabue. So, amog gihangyo pod, uh, sa atong, uh, mayong council, na wadon na lang ng imprisonment, ay, we are amenable, actually, sa totality ba, nakita na'to ang mga provisions sa atong, uh, traffic light sign. Uh, o'yun, mati ng halit tao, mati nagobjekt, kay amoginay sun, sundan, sundan. Although, naala ko'y nakita diya sa, delay ka'ng koe klaro sa Yanovo, Novo, o Watson, sa kuwan, makaliftern ba'ta, gigantasa, uh, Rizal. Pero, that is not the main issue here. And the main issue is, katong atong fines and penalties. So, sa among position paper, naghangyo me, sa among street kita, first, second, third offenses kay one thousand, two thousand, and three thousand. We are amenable to seminar, we are amenable to community service, but we are not amenable to imprisonment. Kay, lo'ing, taoan kayo, in tag, ako'y ma-imprison, kamong imprison. Then, usao na lang na, usano mangitag breadwinner, kung wakailain. Mora na nga akong gustong ipabo sa tanan, sa atong chairman, doctorang city councilors. Thank you.
Thank you, Sir Persing. We always welcome your position paper on this regard. And si Manan, the Deputy O.C., also welcome your suggestions, your position paper on that aspect during our proceeding. So, salamat, Eo. The members will consider that, no? Okay, the main purpose of this penalty, ang main justification is deterrence period. Para makadeter sa atong katawan, di ni'ng maino violation. Although, sometimes, nagay masipiat, no? Wala duma, wala, wala focus, wala kalitan, nakabalit. So, main purpose sa atong ordinance, the penalty is only for deterrence. However, beset say that, during other reasons, City Council, detail on the penalty, amon, kayo ang ato, penalty, konsay ni, ka-makatulungan na, na impostar, labi na, the penalty imposed is maximum five thousand. Na, apoy imprisonment, is allowed by local ordinance. So, amon, need to be, pa'ng setpon. Thank you for giving your impose. Sayang position paper, we update the seat na amon na dawat, uh, last May. No, if back, the POC discussion, amon nagi, timang tima posis, posis, per hearing. So, any other impose, from other speakers? Sir, uh, sir Sabado Kia, you have a floor?
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Sa tanan nga, nagtambong, uh, may yongod. May hapon, Police Captain LP, Paglinawan Sabado Kia, from Osami City Police Office. Uh, concerned lang, uh, point of clarification lang, Mr. Chair, regarding sa section thirteen, can we plus the section thirteen as well as the section fifteen? Wherein, it is embodied therein, the implementing agency is solely designated to the city traffic management services, and in the section fifteen, please, can you scroll down to section fifteen? Uh, the authority of the city traffic and management services, a clarificatory lang, Mr. Chair, if the Osami City Police Office has not given the authority to, as well as the mobile forces, second PMFC Mobile Force, uh, Mr. Chair, because, as we all know, we have a citation ticket, uh, provided to us to implement the ordinances violated by violators within the city, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Before I will, as a, at the basis to respond, kiling maong authentic hit, hatera mo CTMS, is only, siya maguna ba, lead agency, kay edyo minas, through the police, we always be a partner in imposing this ordinance, kung mapopnasa, ato edyo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ang lid lang, mulit na eh, ang CTMS, through, kaoban sa police, kay osa'ng CTMS, delay kayo, kalukan ba? So, we need the support of the police para get, ma-impose ordinance. So, may I have the response, so, from Adone, basis, nisilita? Other bases, you have a floor?
Sir, thank you for pointing that out. The original plan was to include the members in the implementing rules and regulations should the ordinance pass. Po. So, in the IRR, we will specify the rules and responsibilities of each, ano po?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you po.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other inquiry, or any input? Uh, may we have the input of, uh, our PMFC, Deputy Commander, Major Tano, sir, you have a floor?
Uh, good afternoon, Honorable Chair. Uh, my concern is on the provision which states that, uh, a seminar is needed for violators. Uh, eleven. Uh, there was no mention if, what agency would be tasked to implement the, the seminar, if it would be from the PNP or mas maayug sa LTO? So, muaan na said, ma'am.
At the basis, can you clarify the intention, who will conduct the seminar?
Uh, Mr. Chair, with regard to us, who will, as to who will conduct the seminar, um, I think with this best that we put in the implementing rules and agencies, after we have discussed the memorandum of agreement between either LTO, Mr. Chair, or if we can tap the resources of the Philippine National Police, we, we may have the option to do that. Pero, it's going to be an open choice between both of them, po. Mr. Chair.
So, it will be included in the IRR?
Yes, po.
After this, ordinance is approved, we'll have an IRR together with the mua, with the LTO?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, una na IRR then, sir.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Chair. Uh, second, Honorable Chair, I have three concerns.
Proceed.
Uh, second, uh, we have a provision mentioning beating red light. Uh, maybe I could suggest, uh, we, we talk with the Osami CPS, siguro ato po di appeal ang anticipating green light. Kanakbitang, wala pa ng go, nilapas na siya sa linya. Oh, kay drivers mangod kang, usual ka nagpass of traffic lights, mabasa na ni mo nga, after sa red, dere, na naggo dere, mukrin gina. Oh, so, i-anticipat manguna siya sa drivers and diha gitpod magaccidenti, kay mag-abot man ang beating red light o anticipating green light.
Iha na po'yan, sir, kay, ako ba'ng mga commuters, butan aspicas, nga, hing, hinggrina, no, o hingred na, sila pod, mukana'n, red na, mupuwa de, simo grina, wala pa ganin grin, import na, mula na ba? Gi, unahan na ba? Kaya nadali ba'ong sa katalungan? So, uh, you have the point, sir. At the basis, uh, what is the consequence, please? Ng, ilang i-anticipat ang go na?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, sir, your suggestion is duly well noted. If we, if we can, if we observe the traffic lights around the city, there is actually a one-second delay, there is actually a second, Mr. Chair, nga, both of the lights are red. So, five seconds green, mupanay pag-yellow sa other lane, kay para naagi, saktong a delay. But what happens is, instead of the delay is meant to protect the, the vehicles from get, from getting into accidents. Saktos si Police Major Tano, na they actually use this delay in order to anticipate the green light. So, uh, yes, Mr. Chair, we will duly consider that, po.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. And my last concern, Honorable Chair, if there is no prohibition or to at least incorporate the, a, an order, uh, uh, enforcing or banning slow-moving vehicles from utilizing the fast lane. Since our ordinance, the scope of our ordinance covers or encompasses all roads, whether national or local, uh, I would like to take this opportunity, uh, we could incorporate the, the law on slow-moving vehicles. I believe that was mandated by, there was a memorandum circular mandating that the ALG to implement, uh, banning slow-moving vehicles from utilizing the fast lane kay most of our accidents involving single motorcycles and unfortunately, motorcabs. Na'agid sila nagoccupy sa fast lane. And then, with the advent also of these electronic vehicles, it is now very visible sa ato ang, not only in the city streets of Osamis, but also now negotiating or utilizing our national highway. And it is very hazardous, not only sa mga innocent passers, but also sa mga motorists also. And kami mangod sa PNP, uh, during my time, I attempted to strictly implement, but naloo ko sa mga motorcabs. Kay, if we are going to implement the slow-moving vehicles, banning slow-moving vehicles from utilizing the national highway, the violation will fall under, uh, sa'to, ma'am? Sa'tong, uh, failure to give way or katong, kuwan siya, mas higher pasya katong risking other vehicles, oh, kanang, mas takuos siyang penalty. So, at least, matagaan na tu'g ordinance na penalty na pod na reasonable as a sort of reminder, na at least, we could minimize the accidents in our states. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, sir. Kani nga, problema imong gi, being out, easily frequent recurring incident, no? Kay, nakita nga'to nga, ato mga motorcab drivers, dami single, patong nga'ut. Yaman na makos og, skasiya. Niya, munang, nai'ta'ong sa'on, nga, ang mga drivers pwem kabilo di ma-motorkay, second nga, delay is ta'angay ma'to nga. Kedy, require belo, na'is sa'apri'nta. Isto moving vehicles, so be, on the, in most part road, kay, para ato mga, pas, pasmubing maka'agiba. Niya, delay ma, skasiya. So, although we know, sir, that this already national law, we see this, but we'll try to review other bases, uh, legal problem. Kung sa'to mahimo nga, ato may incorporate sa ato ordinance, no? Niya, na'apoy provision nga, ma, ma'tagan ni patagan. Para maminimize sa'to ang, ang al, skasiya, damit sa'ng city. Although, the national law takes, takes, takes care of this. But, we have to, uh, make something special, sa'to ordinance, para matigat, patagan'ut. Na'focus nga, kininga, incident, bili common, no? Niya, ang motorcabs, patong nga'ut, although, dagan na nakibalo ni, mga drivers, mga depacero, kiblo na, nga, mapalapling'ut. So, dagapoy mga kuwan, kay kolo, wala kibalo or, kibalo pro, kay kolo'ut ba? Ma'to nga'ut. So, thank you, sir, for your input, uh, Major Tano. We'll try to review how we can make this, uh, be incorporated in the ordinance para ato na'ta'ng patagan. Thank you very much. Uh, do you want to respond, other bases? Okay. Any other, uh, honorable decision, please? Thank you, sir. You have a floor?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, my concern, Mr. Chair, is with, uh, our CTMS, Sir Wendell. I have a question on regarding, uh, considering ang Osami City, uh, Mr. Chair, is not only a city, nga, ang Osamis nun, ang, ang, ning, ning kuwan, ning avail sa'to ang, uh, traffic light, but also in, uh, sa tanan, mga neighboring, mga municipalities, o mga, uh, kaning, mga one-hedine, magpati gayun, magpa-indroll, magpa-hospital. And considering, uh, we have a very, very busy nga traffic kuwan, ganing, uh, day-to-day routine. Uh, I would, would just like to question, uh, our CTMS regarding our kanakbitang pagpangandam o kanang, how are we prepared enough na ato ning ma-inform, sa tanan, not only sa Taga-Usmis nun, but also to other, na maavail sa ato ang mga traffic rules and sign, na why idea? Or delay pag'yun maayupagka disseminate ang information? Because considering, uh, we could have problems sa ato motorcabs palang, kay, mostly sa Taga-Usmis, likay-likayan ginang traffic light. Ang katong mga riding public, katong mga public transport, mua'gi ginasas sa traffic light. So, na'tay problemaan na daan, nga, ato ginasilang ayuhon o inform, ayuhon o kanang, kanang pagpasabot na, any violation thereof, kung beating the red light, kay ingo, Mr. Wendell, nga, failure to stop or kining beating the red light, moni, kadag, common na dagdag violations, considering of five thousand ang atong impose, kung five hundred, that's already two hundred fifty thousand or something. So, kanak palang, we need to inform our, kanang mga riding, ato ang mga associations, ha, atong mga, mga motorcab drivers, na five thousand gini kumu-violate na ma'ani. Kay, we've been implementing this for the last six months, and then, atong makita, daghan 'yung violation. Dayon, kung mapasar na'ning palabala'ura, are we prepared enough to inform them, on sa ikakayahan sa'tong CTMS, para ma-inform ni'ato kay, kung delay ni'to may'uk inform, I'm sure daghan 'yung kay maka-violate any, Mr. Chair. Wa'pan ato gi consider ang delay Taga-Usmis? So, I would like to ask Sir Wendell regarding this. Oh, do we have enough manpower, katong gi ingon, nga mua, ato ba't tungkina hanglan 'yun i-implement para daghan ma-inform about this? Kay kuwan, so, muna akong question, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Chair. Your comment is on the information dissemination. Of course, after this, honest, order is approved, we'll request the all, uh, agencies, no? Mga radio stations, oban, mga social media, nga, ato neng i-disseminate sa puliko. But, you're asking the CTMS, no? How prepared CTMS to inform public? Uh, you may respond, uh, sir.
Mr. Chair, ubahin na lang pag-implementa na lang, ato nga balao, o pagpahibalos sa uban. Na namatay mga social media, ato na ipa-post na'to, ato, padadaan na'to ang, kanak, mabasa na ma'pura nila po dang mga fusa nasional o lokal nga mga kuwan ma, maka'pasa, bahin na sa ato ang gi, prokos, nga bahin sa traffic light ato, diri sa Osami City. Moro punay ako koma, himo, sa diri sa isip, osa ku sa, sa traffic, diri sa Osamis. Ang kamukuh, mo mo hatag diha, kamu pwem opus po, arum, bata, mabasa, makita sa katawan, sa'to diri sa, diri sa dakbayan sa Osamis.
Okay, actually, kiling, pag, pag, pag-disseminate, is the operation sa tanan, no? Public good, mapalo, this should be promoted by the LGU. Number one, we have the UNC, and we can request the restrictions, tanan, no? Although, at CTMS, usapul sa maglead, ising nga, magdisseminate 'yun, kay sila magway, lead agency mo impose any ordinance, local, although, na'police. So, uh, we need the cooperation of everybody, nga, ma-disseminate na information. This public hearing is a start, no? As I from the POC hearing, start nga, may bolo mga katawan, kena'mtay, uh, coverage, na ma't UNC, ng, ng OneTV, or na social media, digan, na cover na'to. Usanis sa makadiseminate, uh, your impose, may bawang sa ato puliko, no? Uh, Honorable Chair, do you have further comment?
Yes, I have a lot of question, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to ask Mr. Morelion of the Federation, kung na ba kay plano nga, ipatawang ni'mutan na ni'mong mga tricycle, mga, uh, 'yung organization per routine, na ama mo inana, kay, five thousand is five thousand. And then, maglisten na ganing tag come up sa ato ang, tawag ano eh, kadaad lang abangun, dinapay five thousand, din another one thousand na po ni LTO. And then, isa lang ang beating the red light, wa'na, pwede ako, nga, kanang private lang gani ko, delay na silig magbiyahe, mag-commute na lang ko, kay maghadlo ko, asa kumangitag five thousand. So, inana ng dissemination, are you, sa'man ato mga plano sa Federation?
Sir Morelion, you have a floor?
Uh, uh, mayong hapon sa tanan, Mr. Chair. Uh, sa tanan, din na karoon, eh, Sir Tano, Sir LP. Sa kauban sa Awunguna Motor Cab Association, reber. Uh, siguro, ang among plano tingali, among ipa-abot sa mong mga kauban, huhun-hun, o kunsa'y, kunsa'y, amo, ato ang ma'kuwanan karoon, ini nga kuwan, balao dining, five thousand, pero, on five thousand, mora, dakor duduk kayo. Uh, labi na kanang imprisonment, sa'to, usao na lang. Oh, mapuno 'yun, among presuhan, kitera. So, siguro, uh, Mr. Chair, ipa-abot na namo sa mong kauban. Kuwan, okay, bayut sila, ano nga kuwan, kay, midyo, samu-aka, samu-alang karoon din, mora, mora dakor duduk. Uh, so, bagan salamat.
Okay, uh, Sir Morelion, thank you. Kiblo na'ta nga, naibala'ud nga, ama motor- Kailangan tanga, na ibalaod nga, ama motor, motorcabs, na depisero, di yun pag i-on sa highways. Di ba, na may, kailangan mo na, di pag i-service, except, na-exceptions, kay, ang DSGN, be restrict, na monitor yut sa, mga agyo nga, ang motorcabs, depisero, di yun ka-ka-service, sa Osamis, ipa-agi, kay wala laeng dalan nga, kagian, no? Uh, muaagi sa lahat lang, lahat na kayo, libot kayo. So, muna gialaw mo, muna, na ay gamay nga, consideration, bro, unta, ang inyong mga members, mo tumama sa balad nga, di yun magpatongak, para yun mamino sa ato accidente. Anyway, uh, Honorable Speaker, you have follow-up?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a follow-up. Ang kuwan ng Mr. Chair is that, since we are very, very, kuan, kanang desperate, adili desperate, we are very kanakbitang gusto na ginatong ni ma-implement, because having traffic light, we also receive kanakbitang mga guapod, pod ng mga kanang comments coming from other cities or municipalities, nga, ninga sense na yun ang Osamis, because na atay traffic light, tapos nakita na to ang mga disciplinado na ato mga drivers. But, I think na agitay himoon, aning mga preparations, Mr. Chair, sa iyong fully, full implementation. Na agitay, ihatag, aning timeline, considering, na kung dili, kung dili niato maayog, disseminate o inform ang mga riding public, especially si private, especially katong, moan hilang din he, kay, mubisita, or magpa-hospital, or ma, ma, mangongpra, mo-omen go di daghan kay, maka-kuha of violation, kay, ay, wam, maku-kabalod, di mangkutag din he, and 5,000 is 5,000. So, na siguro te himoon, aning timeline, na kung mahuman na ang moa with the LTO and the PNP, nga naasila'y mga, gipanghimo, nga mga information dissemination, mahoman, um meeting si Federation, si barangay, ma-inform tung iya hapong mga kuwan, mga constituents, I think, we are ready for that. Pero, pagka-karon, akong question, yun, are we ready for this, kung ato ang yun idirichong implement without a timeline, na nahimo to mga necessary requirements of steps, before na to i-fullly implemented, or, oh, yeah, transition period, kumbaga, Mr. Chair.